Okay, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. If we please have our city clerk read the remote meeting instructions.
Pursuant to Governor Inslee's emergency proclamation regarding suspending certain provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. During the COVID-19 outbreak, Toppenish City Council chambers will not be open for the public to attend the meeting in person. Call in information for listen-only mode is two five three two one five eight seven eight two. Meeting ID eight nine two nine zero two zero seven zero five eight. Passcode six seven six seven seven six. Email city clerk at city toppenish.us or call five oh nine eight six five six seven five four with questions.
Thank you. Now if we could please do the roll call.
Mayor Oaks.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Sivedra.
Here.
Councilmember Belton.
Here.
Councilmember Seha. Councilmember Duval.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Present.
Let the record show, we do have a forum. Councilmember Seha did not call in. Did anyone else receive word of his absence? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to item two. Continue discussion on proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one amending chapter five point six five of the Toppenish Municipal Code for Special Events Permits. Manager Hoyt.
I thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I'll defer to, for the discussion on this special events ordinance to Financial Service Director Debbie Zabel and, and our permit coordinator Victor Shaw.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're having a continuation of a discussion that we had at the council's regular meeting of January eleventh. And if you would like, I can do a brief recap for the viewing audience of where we're at with that. So, on the January eleventh regular council meeting, we had a presentation to do some amending and additions to our ordinance revolving around the special event permit. And during the presentation, there were a few questions raised by council regarding the number of attendees and the planned review time. And council directed staff to bring back for further review some other information about what other cities are doing with review time and the limits or numbers for attendees for these permits. So, for a brief recap, on the proposed ordinance, had five changes throughout the, throughout the ordinance. And they were from mending the definitions as far as five point six five point zero three zero, which had a lot of superfluous language in it, and we just cut it down. So that was just basically plain talk, so anyone could read it and figure out what it said. We amended five point six five point zero four zero, which had to do with the permit being required. And again, that had some superfluous language that we wanted to cut down on, and also to create a separate section that was easy to find and easy to identify on those events that were exempt from a special event permit. We did also do an amendment on five point six five point five zero, which allowed for the review time of a special event permit to be at the discretion of the city, depending on the situation of the event and the staff availability for that. So, it currently just has a flat forty-five days. And so, we wanted to provide some flexibility with that. And then, the, the final change had to do with just changing a title on the section that had to do with the Fourth Amendment. Staff did provide a worksheet for staff's review on cities that were close to us or had the same, basically same size as us. They range from Zilla, Grandview, Prosser, Benton City, Yakima, Ellensburg, Moses Lake, and City Side. It shows the review time, the application fees, and what the attendees are for each type, whether it's a private or for in a park. And then, we did an average for all, all the cities that we included. And on the worksheet, it shows, at the, at the very end, it shows the average of all the cities. And then, there's another column that has staff recommendations for council to review and determine if that's the direction that you would like to go. I did also include a section from the Washington Cities Insurance Authority on their special event toolbook that they provide to cities. And the whole point of a special event permit is to limit the city's liability from any possible risks that could happen during a special event, and to make sure that we have staff available, particularly for public safety, for fire or police. So, if we were having a big event that could cause reason to think that we might need extra police on duty or fire, we would have that there, and it gives an opportunity for all the departments to review the application, to review the event that's going on, where it's taking place, and what all is going to be involved in the event. And then, I also wanted to just point out that the special event permit is something that is, is at council's discretion. As policymakers, this is something that you, as the council, can discuss and, and decide how you would like the policy for these, these permits to go forward. So, if you have any questions, Victor and I are here to help with that. But other than that, it's, it's, it's your council's discussion to continue on with the, the issue with the numbers of attendees and/or the review time.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. You did a nice job. I was the one that kind of noticed the numbers. And if, if I remember correctly, when we saw it last time, the numbers for, if somebody was going to use our park, if they had thirty people, then they were required to apply for a permit, which I noticed on what we received. This time, that number's been changed from thirty to fifty. And then, so it's gone up, I guess is a good thing. But then, what really kind of stuck out for me was if someone decides they're going to have a party or a festival or something in their house, they can have up to a hundred people without having to get a permit. And I just didn't think that that was fair, because our parks are a lot more open than someone's backyard. And yet, they own, they have to make an application permit if they wanted. Well, now it's fifty. But if you're at home, it was a hundred. So, to me, it just didn't make sense. I thought maybe that should have been like flipped or something. I don't know. Or that the numbers at the park might have to equal the numbers at home.
And, and I would agree with you, Flota. I, I also did some, a little calculation on my own family and immediate family, aunts and uncles. If we're all together, just my mom's side of the family, it could be upwards to fifty-five people. And, you know, it doesn't mean that we're all going to be together at the same time, but given our population, I really do think that we need to keep it a larger number. Because we have big families, that's, that's the type of people that live here. And, and we also don't want to add a layer bureaucracy for people gathering, especially at their own homes. And we should encourage people to want to gather at parks. So, I would like to see the number even fifty increased more.
Do we want it to be a hundred at the park and a hundred at home?
Yeah, I think that would be fair. I mean, if it's going to be a hundred at the park, it should, you know, I mean, right now, the way it looks, it doesn't seem fair at all that you would have to have a lower number at the park, where you're permitting a higher number at residence. I mean, I would like to see it lower at the resident because of the parking issue, but, you know, at least try to be equal somehow.
Yeah, the parking issue at the park and/or at the local residence. I always maintain that we should have a little more leniency on our own private property on what we do and when we do it. But, you know, I mean, if we want government control in your backyard, then make the numbers the same, I guess.
Okay.
And we do have both the police chief and the fire chief are on, and they had, we watched the, the council meeting from the eleventh. And I don't know if either one of them have any comments about the number of attendees at either the park or the residences.
Well, I know that response times for police and fire and EMS are dependent on, you know, we have a requirement that we have to, we have to be able to supply that service, service. And so, sometimes if there's a lot of people in a small area, we need to be aware of that, so we can kind of plan ahead, have some idea that that function may be happening. And also, to let these people know that they need to have a fire lane or the street open or access, so police, fire, EMS could, could get there and help in any way possible. A lot of this is, is just remember liability, liability, liability from our insurance company, as well as, as our requirements to give police and fire service. So.
Yes, I'd like to hear from the fire or the police, and our police chief on their opinion or maybe their concerns.
Well, I can, I can start. From a planning perspective for law enforcement, you know, it's nice to know if these large gatherings are occurring. We can pre-plan, we can have more officers on duty. And so, large events, they usually require a larger police presence. So, I, from law enforcement perspective, we want to be informed of, of large gatherings. But reading the statute, you know, the hundred number, it's, it's not a limit. They can't have up to a hundred. If they have more than a hundred, then they can, they have to get a permit. You know, even if it was fifty, if somebody's planning on a party, a gathering at their home with fifty for a hundred people, that, even if you lower the number down for fifty for the code, you know, they're, they're still going to have a hundred people there. So, I guess from my perspective, cleaning up the municipal code, as opposed to having it, you know, that subjective, if it affects law enforcement or public services, and putting a actual number to the event permit that's beneficial for the city, for all city services. So, that is my opinion. Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
I do. A hundred people in a park, yeah, if they're spaced out enough, it's not an issue. But what becomes the issue is that we don't know about what the gathering in the park, we can't prepare, then we got a garbage mess. Who's responsible for the mess afterwards? When the hundred people or, or even seventy-five people disperse and go home, who's responsible for the garbage? Who's responsible for the garbage in the neighborhood that if you hold a, a hundred-person event at your residence? Yeah, you're going to be parking everywhere, and we're going to get complaints of people, no place to park when they come home from work, and that kind of thing. But who's responsible for the people when they walk back to their cars, the trash and stuff, or the gathering in the streets and stuff? And even the narrow streets, some of our streets, only one vehicle can pass at a time if there's a car parked on the edge. So, I think we, for planning, we need to know in advance these hotspots, or we call them areas where there's a large event, where we can better prepare. That's all I have to say on the issue.
So, Tim, what would you consider a large number? Because the interim police chief also said, oh, a large number, but he gave no numbers. So, how do we know what the number would be? What do you consider to be a large number where you would think that at that time, you would want them to let us know? Because right now, they don't have to let you know until they get to a hundred.
Right. Personally, I think a hundred is too high. A hundred people, if they all came single, that's a hundred cars. I mean, but they're not going to come single, but you're talking maybe, you know, fifty vehicles or twenty-five to fifty vehicles in a neighborhood. So, a number, currently, the trash cans we have in the park, if you had a hundred people and say you had a picnic, there isn't enough trash cans in the park to do, to take care of the trash. So, but we do have trash cans in the park, maybe for fifty people. As far as a residence, a personal residence, I don't know of any resident that has enough trash capacity to take care of a hundred people at the residence with the, with the ninety-gallon can. So, you know, is, do we do fifty all around? I don't know what, what the answer is. I mean, I guess I'm looking to council for some, some numbers, too.
I think my, my, as, as I'm thinking about this and considering, again, my own family, I have a very large immediate family. And, and I think leaving the numbers as they are at a hundred and fifty at the park would make sense, just because, you know, if you have a gathering, you could have a gathering of, of a hundred people there that, that are on one side of the park. And then, you can have another gathering of fifty people on the other side of the park. And just because it's a public park, I think it would make sense to have people just getting a permit if they are planning to have fifty or more, just because then you know how many gatherings will be at one particular park. I think that makes sense. At a home, you know, it's not, if people do have a gathering and they have even seventy-five or eighty people, for the most part, it's going to be a one-time event. You know, because I think if they, they were having an event where they were having that many people at their place, they were, they're going to getting, they're going to be getting, you know, reported. And I think at that point, it would begin to cause a nuisance to the, to the neighbors, and people are going to be calling the city anyhow to say, hey, what the heck's going on over there? You know, so I think it makes sense now, as I think about it more, and just consider those numbers, just to leave them at a hundred for the residential and fifty for the park, just so that we know how many gatherings or cells of gatherings are being kept or, or, are being done at the, at our public parks, I guess.
Well, and, and to, and to speak to councilmember Belton and councilmember Duval's concerns about the, the individual residents, you know, we're not regulating what's happening at the house. All we are is, is wanting to know, are you going to have a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five people? If you are, we need to make sure that our fire and our police department know. We need to make sure that you understand that you need to keep the street clear. If, if someone were to have a heart attack, our firefighters need to be able to get in and be able to help that person. If there's a family fight or an argument breaks out and the police are called, they need to be able to get in and out. So, it really is about just being able to have access into the house in case something were to happen. It's, it's not, it's not dictating what you're doing in your own home. In regards to the parks, the, the issues with the garbage are, that's one of the primary concerns that we do have. And there's also, when they get a lot of people, they do have to bring in extra Santa cans, because not all the parks have bathrooms. And, and a lot of times, folks want to rent. They want to have more benches brought in, more tables brought in, and so, the crews have to go and move that from different parks. And so, there, that, that does have a cost to that. So, we do want to be able to recoup our staff time from the extra effort that's out there. And we want to be able to go out and inspect to make sure that, for instance, we had a gathering at the park across from the post office a few years ago. And so, they used that cabot, the gazebo, and there was quite a large number of people that were there. There was a, they had cars coming in and out. And so, we wanted to charge a damage deposit for that. And so, we had to go out and do an inspection with the person who was doing the special event, documenting all the damage. We brought garbage cans out, they had Santa cans come out, we did roadblocks. And so, we had to have public works crews there to move and remove the barricades, because they wanted to close down. And they did, our main thoroughfare for our police department. So, we couldn't rely on the person who was running the event to have someone ready to move the barricades in place. We heard the sirens come on. So, we had, we said, you, our own people are going to be there and move those barricades. So, and, and the events, they're all different. They, they different from the size and what's going on. And that's, that is where the review of those do, they do come in.
Yeah.
So, I heard Tim say that he thinks that the number fifty is where we should get a permit. What does the interim police chief say? I know he said a large number, but he didn't give a number.
Well, I, I think it's relatively subjective. I, you know, fifty is a good number for the park. Anything larger or, you know, around that number could potentially cause issues with both law, with law enforcement and fire. So, I would be in agreeance with the fifty for parks and a hundred for residential.
Tim, are you also in agreement with the hundred for the residential?
I also agree with that. The last thing I think we want to do is regulate what people do in their own hall, homes or their own backyard. Just, that's not what this is about. It's just about us being notified and know where what's going on, so we can prepare to deliver services to those people in the, during an emergency. So, I would agree with the fifty in the park and a hundred at a residence.
Thank you, Tim. Well, I know that, I like the fact that we increased the one at the park. So, I mean, I was the one that was kind of holding this up. So, if what you're looking for now is a motion to go ahead and move forward with what we have before us, with fifty being at the park and a hundred at the residence, I would be okay with that, now that I've heard both of the Tims.
And then, we did also have a
What was that?
We had the conversation about the review fee and the review time. And so, what is, what would council like to do with that?
Refresh my memory on the review fee.
So, currently, we have a forty-five day notice for reviewing a special event, and we do not charge a fee for that. What staff is proposing after we did the review from the other cities and doing the average of all the cities would be to lower it to a thirty-day notice. And also, keeping the language with the discretion to be able to require more time or less time, depending on the circumstance. And then, charging a fifty-dollar fee for a resident, and then being consistent with our outside city charge of twenty-five percent. Doing it for a sixty-three dollars for non-resident. And then, if it's less than thirty days' notice, then it would be seventy-five dollars and ninety-four dollars. And then, both of them would be a fifty percent discount if it's for nonprofit.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I know that, Nyla, you kind of had a concern with that part, I think. So, I'm going to let you speak to that. I don't know about that.
Well, the only thing I wanted to say about that is, I, I understand that there, there's a fee to getting staff to, to remove barricades. And but I, I think it's a little steep. I think it's a little expensive for residents as well. So, I actually want to hear from the community. I want to be able to forward this to a regular meeting to hopefully get some public comment, so that we can hear from our residents on, on what they're thinking about what is a reasonable fee. Hopefully, we can get some public comment, but I don't want to bring in another fee at this time without public comment. Hopefully, get public comment.
See, I think when it comes to fees, that's where we need to step up, and that's why we were elected, though. Because we're the ones that know how much the city is paying to get all this stuff done. I don't, I don't know if the, the public knows how much they're paying, as far as we're paying those guys to go do all this stuff. I, I don't know about that.
The, the fees are based on staff time and, and also can be increased a little. If it's going to be a lot of people, we need more garbage. It's directly related to that. There's no profit built into it. It's just break even for that time, especially, nothing's worse than, come Sunday morning, the next group wants to come in and take care of their, their business, and there's garbage and stuff laying everywhere in the park, and they're unable to use it. And then, they call and we get complaints. And, and the fee keeps people honest, and, and and they're educated when they come in to get the permit. They, they know it's their response, responsibility to, to fulfill that. And then, is there the deposit anymore, Debbie?
The deposit depends on how many garbage cans are going to be involved in, in those. And so, we do a deposit primarily because some of the folks, when they come in, they don't have a utility account with this. They're, they're not from the city. And so, we don't really, we don't have a way to go after them to collect for the garbage that we disposed of for them. So, we have them post a deposit and, and a damage deposit for, like, the gazebos or the, any other infrastructure that they're using. And then, we would deduct the garbage costs from that deposit.
What I thought you were going to talk about, Nyla, was more about the, the timing, going from forty-five days to thirty days, is what I thought you were concerned about. Not the fee, because that, that was not what I was thinking that you were concerned about. I thought you were concerned that you said, well, I never know that far ahead or something. At least, that's what I was remembering.
Yeah, I, I also did say that last time. You know, a lot of times, people don't plan a month in advance. So, I, I am also worried about the thirty-day notice. I mean, what, give me an example. If somebody was to have a party at the park, and it's over fifty people, and they don't get a permit, what happens in that instance? I'm sure it happens.
All the time.
Well, if that was, would happen, it's a public park, they can go ahead and use the park. However, we give, if you have a permit, then you have a permit to use that site at that time. And then, the, we'd have to call the police to have those other people told to go home or go somewhere else, while the people that have that park reserved can, can use it for their event.
So, we're talking specifically about reservations, Lance, here, or not, not like a birthday party? In, in a section of the party?
So, so if somebody wanted to, if you, if you wanted to just have a birthday party for your, a family member, and there was, right now, twenty-nine people, you could just go take your blanket and go anywhere in the park you wanted and, and do whatever you wanted to do. If you wanted to use the gazebo, you would have to do a park reservation and rent that. If you wanted to have, right now, more than thirty people and use the park anywhere, you'd have to come get a special event permit. If you wanted to have more than thirty people and use the gazebo, you would have to do a special event permit and still pay to rent the gazebo.
So, I was under the impression that they can have up to fifty people without having to get a permit?
So, currently, it's thirty. And then, after Victor did all the legwork and got all the information for the other cities, and he and I looked at it, and it's like, well, maybe, you know, because like Moses Lake has seventy-five, and Yakima, Ellensburg, they have a hundred for their park gatherings. And we thought, well, maybe ours might be a little low. And so, raising it, because the average with all the cities was fifty-two point five people. So, we thought, let's, let's increase. So we thought, let's, let's increase that to fifty. That seemed to be um consistent with what the other, other cities were doing, which is where we got the review times. Which is kind of the average of those. And then there was um like with the nonprofit, that was one of the things that Yakima did. So it's like, that, that might be a, an option council might like to look at doing also. So these are, these are just our recommendations, staff, our council, it's, yes, policymakers. It's, you know, however you want to direct us to do these fees and to do, do the review time. My, my only caution because of finance is, you know, it, it has been council's goal for quite some time to be able to do some cost recovery for that, the amount of work that the city's doing for some of this stuff. And so it does, it does take time for the police chief and the fire chief and um public works and permitting to do the review on these, on these projects and, or, you know, events that are happening. And so um the, the fifty dollars would not cover the costs for the time spent. But it is, it is doing some type of cost recruitment um for the work that the staff is doing. That's taking them away from doing other things.
Are they always having to go out? So like, let's say that someone's going to have a party and they plan to have fifty people there. And um it's just a birthday party. They want the gazebo. Does that necessarily mean that someone's going to have to go out to the park to check something out? Or is that just like, oh yeah, this is just a simple disapproval?
It, it is, it is an approval, or we, they need to submit it like a parking plan or give us some more information. It just depends on the magnitude of what they're doing, of the event that they're holding.
Yeah.
Well, we, we haven't had anything for a year, so it's kind of hard to think about it.
Right.
Somebody wanted to use the gazebo, they would come in and reserve it for, I don't know, January or July nineteenth. And they wanted to use the gazebo. So they would come in, we would, we would take their fees and, and then give them a permit for that time. They would choose their time they wanted to use it. Now that's theirs to be used. Uh, that's, all that is on first come, first served.
Right.
And uh so the sooner you, and people know that, and, and the sooner you get your spot uh reserved, then you, you have confidence that you can have your party, depending on the weather. And if somebody would come in and, and uh other people were using the gazebo, they would have to call the police department. And we would have to tell them, well, these people have a permit. You'll have to go. And sorry, you'll have to go over and use the tree over there or something else. And people are usually, you know, understand that. Uh, if you don't get a permit, it's kind of festival seating. Uh, you, you stand the chance of not getting to use the amenity of the park that you would like to have.
Okay, yeah, because I think that, that would, I, I actually have a personal experience where I had gotten a permit for the gazebo, and I showed up and there were people there already setting up for their party. And I was like, I got a permit. So they had to move.
Yes.
And so that, to me, it makes sense for, if people are planning to have a, a gathering where they have over fifty people that they should be going, getting their permit, paying a small fee to help, help cover the costs of anything extra that they might need, that makes sense. What I guess, I just wanted to clarify was that if people were having a birthday party and they had thirty-five, forty people there, that we weren't going to be like policing whether they had a permit to be at the park or not. But I think in the case of like needing to use the gazebo or needing more tables and stuff like that, then, then it makes total sense here. And, and you were saying right now the fee's at fifty?
Right now that's, we have zero.
Oh.
We don't, we don't charge for the review of that. There is a fee to rent the gazebo. But there's not a fee for a special event review.
But they're proposing, staff is proposing fifty for resident and sixty-three for non-resident.
And the, the, um, and, and the two please, the two chiefs can chime in also on this. But I mean, it, it is, it's when we have the bigger events. It's the Fourth of July parade. That is, that's a special event permit. It's when we had a business owner who um wanted to have a car show close down a street. Um, and he was, you know, brought in porta potties and had a beer garden and, you know, whatever. That, that, that was a big deal. We also had, at Railroad Park, we had a nonprofit group that was doing a fundraising concert. So that, that was another one where, you know, it took some more time to review to make sure we had everything that, that, that group was going to need to have a successful event. Um, and then we have a big car show that typically happens at um Pioneer Park where we do want to be able to have some control over that, because they're going to be bringing cars into the park. And we have sprinkler heads and, you know, irrigation system. We need to make sure that our infrastructure is protected. And there are some guidelines when they're using, you know, the city's facilities.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that makes total sense to me.
We also have issues in the past where people bring it in, they're setting up tents and stuff in the park and in the street. And they have um big vats of cooking oil where they're deep frying stuff. And they have open flame and propane tanks and everything. There's no fire extinguisher on site. So that's why I get involved and we do a pre-inspection to make sure everything's safe. Because these tents are, are temporary membrane structures, as we call them. They burn, they burn fast. As an example, last night, we lost probably half the compound out on nine hundred block West First from a fire that ripped through there. So um all this cooking oil and grease and stuff is very flammable. And it's not safe if it's not protected. You got little ones running across the park. And you got uh baths of cooking oil. It just, we just got to be prepared and, and make it safe for, for visitors, so.
And, and for those larger events that come in, we also do um require them to submit a certificate of insurance that also indemnifies the city so that if something does happen, you know, like my, 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 my and the city manager, you know, ours is all about risk. You know, how are we going to limit the risk if something were to happen? And there's not, you know, a suit that comes after us because we allowed for something to happen and it caused the death or destruction of someone's property or, or whatever. So that's, that's the main goal of, of the special event permit, is, is mitigating any risks that we could have.
Okay. Well, after this discussion, I, I will go ahead and I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one, amending chapter five point six five of the Toponish Municipal Code for Special Events.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
On the floor from Councilwoman Jimenez, seconded by Councilman Belton to approve, continue uh approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one, amending chapter five point six five of the Toponish Municipal Code for Special Event Permits. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signified by I.
I.
Lance has a hand up. He's waving at us.
Yeah, Lance was.
Were we increasing the uh, the park gathering to fifty from thirty?
Yes. Yes.
And establishing a fee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So with the staff recommendations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, was there any opposed?
I.
Okay. I got to nay.
Nay. There you go.
Okay. With that being approved, we'll move on to item three. Receive an update from Tony Miller, Director of the Yakima County Emergency Medical Services EMS on three A Yakima County's current EMS delivery system and three B Yakima County's EMS levy for two thousand twenty-four. We have.
So I, I think Tony, I think I saw him, and also uh Fire Chief Tim Smith is also here to help with the presentation. You on, Tony?
I am on.
Okay. Uh, what we've done, fire chiefs have discussed this at length for better part of a year, probably close to two years. And the problem was ambulance service um in the lower valley, actually all Yakima County. And we need to get a steady or um ambulance service that could be counted on at, at all times. And they'll have to wait for an ambulance, as we do now. We have to wait sometimes upwards of the thirty to thirty-five minutes before an ambulance arrives from Yakima or even further or sunny side. What, a group of fire chiefs, with fire chiefs in general, we formed a committee and we looked at how we could fix this. And with Tony's help, we come up with the single source ambulance company to where we can regulate them, to where we could they would have to provide or guarantee a response time to certain areas based on a, a, a trauma map zone. And also um that they didn't meet that response times. Um, ninety percent of the time, they would be fined. And so we come up, Tony come up, Google was came up with this, a single source. Uh, council, you supported that, wrote a letter to Yakima County Commissioners probably a better part of a year ago, or if not, um nine months to a year ago. Is that correct so far, Tony?
Yeah, I think it was March of two thousand nineteen is when we had the meeting with the Toponish City Council.
Okay. So you guys probably seen all the, the publicity going on now, how it's an unfair process or anything. We've gone through this process. It's been through uh legal through the city of Yakima and also through Yakima County. We come up with the proposal. We went out to bids. And uh three people had submitted uh contracts, and then one withdrew the day that we received the presentation. So it brought us down to two companies, which was AMR and ALS. Both companies provide service in Yakima County today. It's just that we just don't have reliable services, what we're looking for. And so I know, I'm sure you've seen the publicity out there, the bad publicity. I brought Tony on board here to see if you have any questions about the process right now. Because right now, the proposals were put before um, before the group of fire chiefs and was graded by three impartial people from, had no ties to the fire service. So no ties to EMS in Yakima County. This was the chief out of um Ellensburg, the chief out, out of um Benton County and an ex EMS director who'd been retired for years. And they, they graded the whole system, the proposals that were given to us. Tony, I'll let you take the word from there.
Sure. So, yeah, we started this in August of two thousand nineteen is when the, the fire chiefs made up the RFP Committee, Request for Proposal Committee. Kind of like any other thing that the cities do, they got to go out the bid. We also had one person from uh Suncom Dispatch involved in that. We started that process of August of two thousand nineteen. We moved forward until COVID unfortunately hit. And it kind of stalled out for a few months while we were getting things taken care of there. August of two twenty, two thousand twenty, we started working on it again. In October, we finished it. We uh presented it to the uh three county commissioners at that time. They uh said to go ahead and proceed. It went out to bid on October twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty. It went out for bid. Um, as Chief Smith said, we had three ambulance companies uh bid on it. When the new county commissioners came in in November, I did another presentation to them to get them up to speed. They also agreed that this needed to be done because of the response times and lack of ambulances we have. Um, bids were uh, the proposals were turned in on January twelfth. At that same time, each company did a oral presentation about their proposal. Um, after that, on January fourteenth is when the three scores come in. They handed each a, one proposal from each company. There was thirteen um criteria they were scoring on. And it ranged from type of ambulances, um pricing. That's the other thing that's going to happen. Right now, there's no regulation on what the ambulance companies can charge a patient. So they had to submit what their pricing's going to be for uh if they transport a person, because this is a no cost to any of the cities or county. Kind of like we, we're doing now. And right now, they can charge whatever and there's nothing we can do about it. So that was scored on. Um, the other thing, like Chief Smith said, the time response. They had to give us a plan of where they're going to put ambulances um to meet the time requirements. And actually, both proposals had one ambulance in Toponish like we have now, but both companies also proposed to put an ambulance in Wapato. And I've been doing this for thirty years. Um, Lower Valley's always suffered. They've always only had one ambulance because the call volume was so hit and miss down there that there are times that they have to come from Yakima. Well, with this proposal, there will be two ambulances in the Lower Valley. And they'll have to move ambulances, if both ambulances go out, they'll have to move some down there. Because for Toponish, there has to be a ten-minute response time ninety percent of the time, or they will be fined for that uh, that lack of time response. Uh, moving forward, on February second, uh, the commissioners, at the commissioner meeting, um unanimously voted on American Medical Response, getting it into their proposal and their score. Um, the scores were, that was one of the things that got brought up, is how did AMR get a perfect score? AMR did not get a perfect score, but the way the scoring works, it's kind of like electoral votes. Whatever proposal had the bet, was the best in that category, got full points. It just cleans it up a little bit, and then the other company gets scored accordingly. So that's been one of the big things out there in the media. They got a perfect score. That's not necessarily, but do, we just wanted to make it cleaner. This is how they've done RFPs for ambulances in other areas. So that's how, what, the reason that scored. So if you do hear, well, there's no way you can get a perfect score. It's not necessarily they got a better, perfect score. They just got a better score than uh the other company. And so that's why they got the full points for that category. And then on February eighth, Advanced Life Systems um submitted a protest against AMR, why they got it. Um, the reasons were is AMR had a contract termination back in Oklahoma City uh that started last September. Um, it took effect January thirty-one of this year after the proposals end. But in the RFP, it does state, this may be a disqualifier. Doesn't say it is a disqualifier, it may be. Um, but AMR also has about, I want to say two hundred and fifty thousand employees globally. They have multiple contracts everywhere. And out of the ten years that they had to submit, this was the only one. Um, you can research. This, AMR originally is suing Oklahoma City back in August. In Oklahoma City, the city pays the ambulance service. They pay for every transport. I'm not sure on the details of why, but that's how it is. Well, AMR was suing because uh Oklahoma City had not paid them sixteen million dollars. And so, and then Oklahoma City turned around and countersued. So the big focus is, is AMR got sued and, you know, they terminated a contract. Well, when you read the details, it's kind of understandable. If you're not getting paid for service, it's kind of hard to stay in business. So the legal, county legal and the commissioners have been reviewing it. And uh we meet this Thursday again with legal to hopefully finish it up and proceed which, one way or another. There's enough information out right now that we could not do another RFP, because I don't think it'd be fair, because each company know, kind of knows what the other one did. And if they, the commissioners decide not to move forward at all, we're right back where we're at, where we're not having good service. I live up in Seela. I'm on Seela Fire Department. I've had to wait for an ambulance from Toponish to come pick up one of my patients. We've also had to have Kitata's Fire come down with their ambulance and transport trauma patients, because there's no ambulances available. And I'll just hit real quick, because I don't know if everybody knows. The reason we, we start running low on ambulances is our nine-one-one cars are also doing our inter-facility transports. Nursing home to hospital, hospital, nursing home. Excuse me. Hospital to hospital, over to Seattle, Spokane, Vancouver. So we're robbing Peter to pay Paul both ways. Um, inner facilities are very important. We need to get patients to a higher level of care and a timely manner. And patients at the hospital are waiting for an ambulance to free up from a nine-one-one call to be able to go do the trip. And then vice versa, we're waiting for nine-one-one patients, because cars are all on uh inner facilities. So it's, it's recognized, this has been talked about for a number of years. It needed to be done. Um, this finally comes to the point where we have to do something. And I'll take any questions.
If you go with one ambulance company and per se it's AMR, are they going to be locked for a few years in their great transport? How much are they going to charge?
Yes.
Or are they going to be able to make a cost of living adjustment per year?
They will be able to make a cost of living and that will be negotiated in the contract on how we do the CPI. I think it's fair. Now, everybody does CPI. If they want to make any significant change, that'll have to become for the Board of County Commissioners, which will reach out to everybody else and discuss that.
Okay.
I have heard that some of the concerns that people were having is that there was an physician involvement or input in this. Can you speak to that?
Yes, I've heard that quite a bit. The physicians really have nothing to do with EMS. You can go talk to a physician and ask about an ambulance and basically they barely know what is carried in an ambulance. The main stakeholders here are the fire departments because they're the ones that are responding and having to wait for an ambulance to get there. And there's only certain stuff that the fire department do because they're basic life support, where ambulances are advanced. So there's medications, things that can be done, but only by the paramedic on that ambulance, where the fire department can do very basic stuff. So yes, physicians, you can talk to them. Even our MPD, our medical program director for the county said this is, you know, he supports it. He believes it needs to be better, but he wasn't one that wanted to be involved in it because he goes, I really don't deal with it outside of when they come through the ER doors.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? This has been the same system has been tried all over the nation, if not tried or it's been in service for years all over the nation, including the city of Spokane, Spokane, parts of Spokane County. So.
Yeah, I, if I recall, the last time we were discussing ambulance and ambulance services, there was a huge concern on the response time.
Yes.
You know, people don't want to wait a half an hour to forty-five minutes for an ambulance. And so we we feel that that pressure to make sure that we're looking for options to be able to provide that care in whatever capacity we can in the shortest amount of time necessary. And so I know that if, if, if it were my family and I was waiting on an ambulance, it would not be a good thing if I had to wait a half an hour for the ambulance to arrive. I mean, we're talking about a life and death situation.
Councilman Garcia could probably attest to this as well, Mayor Oaks, but when you're waiting, when your family member waiting for an ambulance to arrive, even though it might only be ten minutes, it seems like it's forty-five minutes to an hour.
Oh, yeah.
And, and what people don't realize is, yeah, we're waiting for an ambulance. We're giving you all the care we can give you, the level of care that we're, we can give you. But it ties us up. If we're waiting thirty-five minutes, we're tied up at that scene. What if somebody else? What if your next door neighbor has a heart attack or somebody across town? We're tied up at that scene until we can clear, leave one person there with a trauma bag and respond to that second scene. But now we're waiting for another ambulance for that scene.
Yeah, yeah.
I also have another question. So we're going from two companies to one, correct?
Correct.
And with this new RFP that, that was put out, the successful bidder is proposing only two in the lower valley?
Oh, no, 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 no.
One in Wapato, one in Topper, or is there more?
Correct. No, there's going to be a total of eleven ambulances on a day, but we're just, there's going to be an extra one now in the lower valley. Instead of just the Topper car, you'll also have a Wapato car also for available for calls. So during the day from eight in the morning, I think, until midnight roughly, there's eleven ambulances on. And at night, from midnight till eight in the morning, there's eight. Right now, we average six at night. So we're adding more hours also. We'll have more ambulances on duty.
But if one of those ambulances gets pulled out, they have to put another one back there to make, to keep it as two ambulances available during that time?
If they, yes, to make the time requirements are going to happen now, they could leave one in, like if the Topper car goes out and the Wapato car is available, it can make it to Topper from Wapto in ten minutes. So it still meets the time requirements. But now both of them are on calls, then they're going to have to move cars around and make sure that's covered.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
And can you also tell me like how much more, like how, how's, how's that response time going to improve? I know you said it was upwards like forty-five minutes, hour, and now it's now with this RFP or this successful bidder is proposing that all calls are going to be responded to within ten minutes?
Not all calls. There are different timeframes throughout the county. Like the Nile is like thirty-five or forty-five minutes, but Topper, since it's a larger city, Chief Smith and I talked and I agree that down there in that area, you guys have enough calls in the city limits that you need a quick time response. So I'll, I'll bring this up. So right now, we have two ambulance companies. They're both for profit. They have to, you know, they only make money if the tires are turning on that ambulance. Well, the majority of the calls are in the city limits of Yakima. And right now, we have three ambulances that are posted or parked less than two miles apart. There's one at Ninth Avenue in Yakima. There's one at Walnut and Second Avenue, or excuse me, Ninth, Ninth Street and Yakima Avenue, Second Avenue in Walnut and Eleventh and Yakima Avenue, three ambulances. Because that's the high volume areas, so they're competing to get all those calls. When we go to a sole provider, they're getting the whole pie instead of this partial. Now they can move some ambulances out. They know those ambulances aren't going to be as busy as some of the downtown ones, but they're still getting everything. They're not having to compete and try and place where they can get the most calls. It's a competition.
Competition is good, especially if it's going to force the companies to provide better care and better service.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not guaranteeing a ten-minute response time. Of course, that's what we want. But this gives us the capability of dealing with it if they're not meeting the response times that are, they've agreed to.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we all know that you can't guarantee a ten-minute response time on every single call.
Stuff happens, exactly.
That's right. But we can deal with it if they are not meeting those requirements.
Yeah.
Correct. Because right now, they could be, right now, they could take thirty minutes and there's nothing that the city of Topper or citizens can do. It's a, it's an oh well. You know, there's no contracts. We can do it. Or they could, each, each ambulance company by law only has to one, run one ambulance a day for three, six, three hundred sixty-five days. That's all they're required to have by law to have their trauma license is to have one ambulance on.
Hmm. So this will be, there's, there's a level of accountability.
Absolutely.
Very much so.
Yeah.
The other thing that's in this, the RFP that to be interest for the city is if you guys have any city community events that the city's putting on, it's in the proposal that they do, they send an ambulance for coverage for that event at no cost. That's part of the community involvement that is going to be in the contract.
I like that.
Now, these ambulances, are they all going to be manned with at least one paramedic onboard? ALS, BLS or ALS?
We're going to tier, the system's going to go to a tiered system because there's many calls that do not require a paramedic and they're tied up when somebody else could be using them if they have a heart attack. So we're going to have BLS and ALS ambulances in the lower valley. I believe they are going to be ALS at the current. But we're going to have a stipulation that, you know, after six months, we review it with them and make changes as needed.
So it sounds like with this contract, there'll be more continuity of service. There'll be even more ambulances available, which will hopefully reduce that response time. With the contract, we'll have basically a competitive cost per call, depending what the call is. So.
Correct.
Yeah. And it's a three-year contract?
It's a five-year with four one-year extensions if we agree. And the reason we switched from a three to a five is both, in fact, all three companies asked this question because of depreciation. Because these, we're changing ambulances. If you notice now, we see a lot of the van ambulances running around. Those are not conducive for working a critical patient in. So the company is required to buy new box ambulances. They cannot have more than two hundred thousand miles on them before they have to rotate them out, just for dependability. So there's a, there's pretty big cost here to start this. So, you know, they all asked, if we can go to a five-year, at least they'll get some of their costs back from the initial startup.
So thank you for that, Tony.
Thank you.
Good job, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Was also asked to update, I believe, I forget who asked the question at the last meeting. Go ahead, Lance.
On the, we needed, we were, we had an update on the Yakima County EMS levy for two thousand and twenty-four.
Tony's an expert on that one as well. This, our levy is good until twenty twenty-four, correct, Tony?
Yes, the levy comes up January one, two thousand twenty-four. We're looking at run it the same way we did the last one and we're going to put it on the ballot in November of two thousand twenty-two. That way, if it does not pass, we have time to run it again prior to expiration. We are going to start to talk probably May or June. We need to come up with our committee for the, for the levy. Some things to think about. It's twenty-five cents per thousand. It's been that way since nineteen ninety. There's been no raises in it. So there's been talk maybe raising it a little bit, you know, five cents, ten cents. Well, that's roughly, you know, an extra dollar a year for the households to pay. You know, things have gone up, personnel costs, equipment supplies, everything's gone up over thirty years, but that levy has not. The other talk about it, do we want to make it a permanent levy where it resets every year? Because for two thousand twenty-one, I think we're down to twenty-one cents per thousand now with depreciation. So that's also been talked about. If there's any, if any ideas on that, Chief Smith can get those. So when it comes time to meet with the boards, we can do that.
Also, there was talk and discussion about the changing of the formula. The current formula being used is based off of your assessed valuation of the city. One-third of that, one-third for total population and one-third for EMS runs, how busy you were. Some of the upper valley departments, they were, have a high assessed value. So their constituents were paying in, but the department was receiving less than what the constituents were paying in. So it didn't seem fair that the taxpayers were in, for example, the West Valley or Seala areas where they have a high, high volume or high valuation, but a low volume of calls. And so they complained a little bit and through meetings that Lance and I, and Clara was there, we had to come up with a fair evaluation. And so now we've, we're still going to use the three-part system, but only eighty percent of assessed valuation and then total population and EMS runs. And so in other words, no department will lose on his evaluation. In other words, if your evaluation of your city, you're going to get at least eighty percent of that back for that department. And so it would come up with a fair way and it's not going to be implemented until the new levy is in place. So we're, we're not going to see any reduction until twenty twenty-five, actually. But actually, we're a year behind. We received twenty twenty-four funds that were created in twenty twenty-three. So, you know, in twenty twenty-five, we'll receive twenty twenty-four funds. Is that correct, Tony?
Yes, that's correct. No, that's correct.
We didn't want to take the hit. We were getting subsidized by other cities because we have a high volume of calls. Those other places have a very low volume of calls. We have a high volume of calls. It's because, based on our population, you know, demographics, we're a poorer community because a majority of our people don't have health insurance. And so they rely on that one, so we get called. And so that's just the way how that worked out. So this seemed to be a more fair way. The Fire Chief took a vote on, oh, back in, I want to say, last spring. And this was the fairest way we could do it. We knew they had to change because they county commissioners voted for the change. And this is what we come up with. So. And I hope that answers your question, Clara.
So Tim, and the West Valleys of the world, they're okay with that, the eighty percent?
Yeah, they're, they're okay with that. I mean, they, we kind of met in the middle. It was a great, great deal. I think all departments, West Valley, Seala, all, we all met in the middle. They realized that we're busy in calls and, and so that's how we were getting a lot of the money. And we realized they were, have a higher value. So they're paying a lot of money and getting, but they weren't getting what all they're paying because the fact that the call volume was eating it all up. So we reduced the number of calls we're going to. We also do a more criteria-based dispatch to where the hangnail or the earache doesn't warrant an EMS response. Because we get a lot of those. And so we're cutting through a lot of that stuff too.
Okay, because I know that one of their concerns was they felt that in a way we were double dipping when it came to some of those calls. So I just wanted to make sure that, that doesn't appear to be happening anymore.
That's all been eliminated. One call, only one department gets a credit for that call, not two departments or whatever. And so we fixed all that. So.
Thank you, Tim. That was one of the concerns. And I just want to make sure their concerns were taken care of. And it sounds like they have been because those were two of the important parts right there.
Yeah, they've, West Valley, the chief up there and their commissioners, and they were, came to the table and we all sat down and I was very glad to see them come together. And everybody kind of get together and we'll get this worked out. It sounds like we got a really good plan to do that.
Well, I thank you because I know that when we attended that meeting in Wapato, you weren't anywhere close to anything at all. So thank you for meeting in the middle and having them understand that the poor communities weren't trying to take advantage.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for me? Thank you for your time and your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Smith and Tony.
Thanks, Tony. Wherever he is.
I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and move on to item four. Adjournment unless City Manager Hoyt has something to stop me on?
Not tonight.
Very good. We will adjourn the meeting.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.